The dentist.
He married Char.
Yes, they did.
Yes.
They're together.
Thank you.
I'm not a listener.
Why does he need to say?
No, really.
I think you're right.
Just kind of cheesy stuff.
No.
They'll be everybody.
Everybody knows somewhere.
Great.
We'll talk to them.
It's all money.
All right.
So that might be, he might be just.
I might have to buy me a beer from the state.
I don't have a problem with that at all.
Oh, we're late. Sorry.
Called four thirty.
I'm sorry. All right, I'd like to call an immediate order, please. For public information, the copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of the Commissioners' Room. Roll call.
Mayor?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Reisig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
All rise for Pledge of Allegiance, please. Hey, do we have any changes to the agenda?
I don't.
Kelly? Board, do you have anything to add or anything?
Nothing's all right with anything, Russ?
Yeah.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
All second.
Any discussion? Record your votes, please.
Can we close?
Close, please.
You have five guesses.
Thank you. I remind everybody that the board does reserve the right to enter to a closed session anytime that we feel it's necessary. To either go into contract negotiations or protection of personnel. Moving down to consent agenda, anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
All second.
Any discussion? Record your votes, please.
Close.
Close. Motion. Thank you. Motion to move into Board of Equalization?
I move we go into Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes.
Okay, close.
Close, please. First item, Gene Bauer, interim deputy assessor, Robert Simpson, Simpson Assessor, Office Manager. You guys have anything to add on anything? Nothing tonight? You're all right. Okay. With that, to need a motion to receive the tax list corrections.
Move to receive the tax list corrections.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Record your votes, please. Okay, need a motion to come out of Board of.
Five guesses.
Thank you. Motion to come out of Board of Equalization.
I move that we come out of Board of Equalization.
Is there, we have a second, is there any discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay, close.
Close.
You have five guesses.
Thank you. Well, road and bridge. Mr. Baird. You have the floor, sir.
It's that time of the year for our fuel bidding. I gave to you just before the meeting here. Turning out of the bids submitted, we submitted out to five vendors, got four bids back. That's a little better than we did last year. Then we got two bids back. You see on the sheet, the lowest bid we had for our diesel was Sat Brothers at two eighty-three. Uh, followed by Penelope Coop at two eighty-eight and then considerably went downward from there. So I guess I just would for approval of Sat Brothers to provide our fuel again this next year. They were our vendor last year.
Okay. Did entertain a motion for approval or disapproval of the recommendation?
I move that we approve the recommendation for Sat Brothers.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I thought when we, when we decided to go out for bid, the thought was, um, that maybe this wouldn't be, um, as advantageous as it was last year to, to do it. Was it, is it a ten-month contract or?
For the year, December thirty-first.
So, um, we had talked to two or three meetings ago about, you know, going out for bid, seeing what the bids were when they came back. Um, and then the thought was, or an idea was floated that maybe we would reject all bids. I haven't really followed the, the fuel market as closely as over the past two weeks or done much of research, but I was wondering if Russ had any input on, so I think it was your, your comments a couple of meetings ago that prompted the thought that maybe we're just going to bid to see what's out there. Do we want to do a twelve-month contract?
I would just assume we were locked in. At least do, you know, make sure we get it under next year's budget to where, you know, even if it goes down, we're locked in, but we have no control if we don't lock it in and it goes up. So by, by locking it in, we know where we're going to be. And I, I'm happy with where he's at on it. I guess personally, I'm, I'm happy with what Steve's done here. So I, I don't, I don't know how we would change it. Do you, you have a suggestion on what you're thinking on that?
Nope, I just.
Okay, I, I think we're good.
I just found what the conversation was last time was based on markets.
It. So it seems to me that these, uh, the diesel price seems to be very good compared to what I see on pump prices. Um, yeah, unleaded, which we won't, we don't have a way to buy it right now, right? Or you still buy some now, don't you?
Yes. So I'm assuming our diesel price they quoted this time around is just about, about thirty-eight cents a gallon cheaper than last year's.
Right.
And the gas is twelve cents a gallon cheaper than last.
Steve, are, are we taking into consideration our proposed fueling station for?
No, this isn't the gas.
Not on this.
That's not, that's not included with this, okay?
Steve did do some checking on that. I talked to Steve earlier this afternoon and, uh, once we start buying at ten thousand gallons a drop, it'll be twenty-five cents a gallon cheaper on the gas. And we can get his crew a card as well. They can buy out of that ten thousand gallon tank as well because they're right there. So it'll, it'll save throughout the whole organization.
So this diesel price has a twenty-five cent reduction because we're able to buy in those kind of quantities. Is that what you're saying?
The gas, the gas will. Once we start dropping that ten thousand.
But the diesel already does.
Well, it depends on how much they're dropping. I don't know that we have big enough tanks to accept that yet. Um, we're working on tanks out there. I'd like to increase the tank sizes at least gearing.
Be able to.
And then take those tanks at gearing and split those between the other two places so they can split.
Well, I guess all I'm saying is that the two eighty-three, when I look at the pump price, seems to be very advantageous. When I look at the gas price, then not so much. I mean, didn't, I thought I just seen on the way over here, two forty-nine or something like that. And I'm, so.
But he's buying ten thousand gallons or thirteen thousand is all he's.
I would have to assume that it's good for seeing that in the future, the gas is getting a little bit. Is what, is what I feel what this is.
Trying to price it for the year.
Thought maybe the diesel might be a little bit lower, but guessing they have the feeling it's going to go back up this summer.
But they're all similar.
Yeah, the gas is all within.
Um, cough is here. But well, I don't have any problem approving this. Again, I seconded the motion and certainly feel okay with that, but it, it seems to me that we're getting a significant advantage on the number two diesel, but we're not as significant on the.
Now, this is, this is red fuel we're buying. It's not highway tax. We have to, we still have to pay highway tax on that.
And that's, so that's part of why it looks so good.
Right, correct.
Right. All right.
Is there any other discussion? If not, record your votes, please.
Are you going to get this? Okay.
Close, please.
You have five guesses.
Thank you. Okay. I'll just do it right now. Can you take it with you? There you go. All right, next item on the agenda under general is discuss, consider approval of the annual report for the twenty twenty-four control plan. Jeff?
Two thousand twenty-four control plan. Giving report, project report, roster and infestation. If anyone would have any questions possibly today?
Other than the fact that you, you need a lot of signatures here.
Five. I went through that here myself.
That's not so bad. All right. I won't sign them till we vote for them.
Pardon?
I'm not going to sign it till the vote is in. Okay. I would entertain a motion to either approve or disapprove the, uh, report submitted by Mr. Schleitowitz.
I move that we accept the report as, uh, submitted by Mr. Schleitowitz.
Is there a second?
All second, man.
Is there any other discussion?
Um, on the, on page one where it says, how many infestations are reported? It says eight. What does that refer to?
Department of Ag comes up and randomly selects properties throughout the valley of our county and inspects them. A lot of these inspections are probably at least five years old. As far as I know, Department of Ag hasn't been here since two thousand twenty-one to re-inspect.
We're doing everything recent on that.
No. So if they're going to close them, then everything's running out there in one boat.
What have we done to follow up on, on those infestation? Are we, are we?
When they first came to us as an infestation, I'd go out and inspect them, contact the landowner. And at that time, some of those, we, the county went in and controlled them, sprayed them for the individual landowner. Come up here and re-inspect. I haven't seen the inspector in my office for two years.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? If not.
Yeah, I just.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I would just, I would like this board to take a more active approach to, um, the weed control authority. Um, done a little bit of research and in other counties, um, the weed authority is made up of some citizens from, from the county and, and, and some counties is made up, the weed authority is the Board of Commissioners. Um, I would like that weed authority, whoever it is, commissioners or the, you know, people assigned at large by the.
When you talk about individuals, that's a weed district. We are a weed authority. We are governed by our county commissioners.
Okay.
Not a district.
So what I would like to, what I would like to see is, is um, kind of like we do the, the Board of Equalization. The Board of, uh, we meet as the Board of Corrections when we tour the jail. I would like just to see maybe once a quarter at least. Kelly, have.
We don't go into Board of Corrections when you guys leave, by the way.
But we're operating as a Board of Corrections. And when we operate as Board of Equalization, we move into Board of Equalization. I would like to move into Board of Weed Control Authority and take in and tackle weed business.
As a board.
As a board.
Okay.
That's what I would like. I would like, I would just like this board to take a more hands-on approach to the, to the weed authority that we have in the past.
I'd like to throw out there, you guys are going to the detention center tour as the Scottsbluff County Board of Commissioners by statute.
Not the Board, not the Board of Corrections.
Yeah. Corrections. Just if I'm doing something wrong, I need to know.
I think we can research that later. I think, you know, maybe.
What do you say about? I know what the statute says. Well, are we a Board of Corrections? It's. Think as, as a Board of Corrections, that's what triggers you. You have to come. Because if you did not have the Board of Corrections, if the jail was under the, under the sheriff, you don't have to go there.
Okay, so would we not have to go into the Board of Corrections to meet, to come out to visit the jail?
You know, that's a technical, that's something technical that I, that I can't.
Where we could use an attorney on that.
I don't, I don't believe we've ever, I don't believe we've ever done that in my few years I've been here.
But it doesn't mean.
It doesn't make it right.
We don't know the right answer.
Yeah. Right answer is not apparent by the statute. And so unless somebody raises the question, then it's, it's, it's whoever's opinion. I think you meet the statute if you go there.
It's just a matter of making a motion to go into Board of Corrections.
Jail, you don't take any action. I agree.
Okay. Uh, getting back to Charlie's comment on the, uh, on the weed, Jeff, okay, you, you'd said that there's the weed authority and then the.
We are the weed. You are.
We are the weed, we are the weed authority. Correct.
Certain. Give you a number. Certain parts of the state, there are weed districts where people like on the planning commission, they get together and that's who governs.
And I thought, I thought we had the last two counties.
We did.
Larry Cameron's, we all used to run the weed. Two counties years and years ago.
We have a.
Imagine the entire state is governed by weed districts at the time.
What is the high plains weed management?
That was. Funding your grants through the trust.
So that's a third. I. Okay.
You, I, I believe you guys had me take that off. Our listing.
The last.
Okay.
Okay. I, I just remember seeing that on our list, okay?
But a weed district, in my opinion, would be like your. It's private citizens, city.
That said on the weed district, which we don't have.
Yeah.
Okay, Charlie, give it, give me an idea of what, what more you want to do. How do you want to? How do you want to do whatever it is you want to do differently than what we're doing now?
Let's look into it, shall we? Why don't we see just exactly what?
Yeah, just, just kind of, just a kind of an overview. I feel like weed authority to be an agenda item once a quarter. Under that, under that heading, when we move into Scottsbluff County Weed Control Authority, just like we move into the Board of Equalization to, to take care of, um, equalization issues. Um, under that heading, we would, we would address, um, concerns or maybe review properties that have been inspected or, or, or becoming a problem or.
Or just, or a report from the weed superintendent.
A report from the weed superintendent, yeah.
Okay. I have no problem. It's fine.
No, no problem with that at all.
Okay. Any other discussion? I have none.
Whatever we're talking about there is not part of really this motion.
No, it's not.
This is just about this.
Well, I.
That's in the future.
I, but I asked for, I asked for, for discussion and that's part of that discussion. If we're completed with the discussion, then let's record our votes, please.
Yeah.
I've got it here. I'll sign it. I, whatever works best for you, Jeff, I can do it. I'll, I'll sign it. I'll get it to Kelly for you. Okay. So we keep moving here. All right, thank you. Next time discussed, consider approval of letter of support for the broadband projects. Matt Silverman from Vista Bean Business Development. And you brought, you brought somebody with you. Okay.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
So I guess in short, we've got the Nebraska Broadband Bridge Program that has another grant application cycle, uh, January nineteenth, this Friday. So we've worked to prepare some different applications across the western part of the state. One of them is here in Scottsbluff County. There's an area north of Scottsbluff and an area south. Um, they're, they're fairly rural areas. The proposal is to build fiber to the home, the business or the, or the premise. Um, support from the county isn't a requirement, but it's, it's recommended. So we, we'd love to, you know, be able to have a letter uh, stating your support. Um, we're not asking for any money or, you know, any involvement. That way it's not a public-private partnership. Um, we just, you know, would like to have your support matters.
Do you have a form letter that generally you basically solve it's offered? Do you have something written up in advance on what you've used in other counties?
Yeah. Yep.
You have the.
I have what that.
I'd be more happy to answer questions, uh, just to try to be respectful of your time, so.
Are there, are there other companies that are doing the same thing, sir?
I'm sure there are lots of companies, uh, both from in the state of Nebraska and outside applying in this grant cycle. I don't have any way to know if anyone has an overlapping grant application for the same area, same area. They're, they're all submitted in competence. After, when they award the grants, we'll see. Actually, they'll announce who applied for what and there's a challenge period. So if another provider feels, you know, like, uh, yeah, let's say one provider feels the other is asking for a grant in the area they already serve, there's an opportunity for them to challenge that. Then the state of Nebraska will either uphold that challenge or.
And when you say the state of Nebraska, you're talking about the Public Service Commission.
Correct.
Right, makes that decision. Okay.
Yeah. Now, this particular grant fund is funded through the Capital Projects Fund, so it's actually federal money, but the state of Nebraska administers.
Administers it through the, through the, uh, commission.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the same grant, uh, program last year that we, we were awarded the, uh, the bid to build Oshkosh. So we're just getting geared up on the construction for that. And that was fiber, fiber to the brand, as they call it, the business of the home fiber in Oshkosh, so.
Well, I think it's a great program where, um, residences and businesses outside the metro or not metro, but the cities, um, are able to get, um, a lot better quality internet available to them. I think that's wonderful. I think, um, from a, the standpoint of us supporting that idea is great. The big issue, and we talked about it last time, um, was that, uh, if someone else came to us and wanted us to give them a letter of support, that, um, particularly, um, if they were somehow had some local connections, that, um, what we had said then, I believe, was that we probably would support their, uh, application as well. Um, but certainly, um, this doesn't exclusively.
I was going to say, we're not asking for exclusive support. In fact, the same situation exists in a couple of the other counties to the next year.
It's, it's a consumer's choice. So who do we want to use, right?
Yep. Yep, so, yeah, not asking for any exclusivity. If there was ten providers that were looking for support in Scottsbluff County, I think that's wonderful for them.
But only one company is going to get the money.
Correct.
And that's the key. One company is going to get the money.
Yep.
For this project.
Yep, so there's, um, there's a scoring system that the Public Service Commission has. There's a hundred and sixty possible points. Um, they've got that all spelled out ahead of time, the way they score the applications. Um, I won't bore you with the details. You know, there's lots of, you know, each, each portion might be worth five points or ten points. Um, they also, they, they break the applications into three different categories. Tier one has to be all what they consider unserved locations. So this application here is a tier one, so everyone that's listed in this application, um, every location is, is they're considered unserved by the state of Nebraska. So they're saying, these folks don't have access to even twenty-five meg down by three up. Now, along this fiber path that's proposed, there's lots of other customers that could certainly hook into the system, but they have access to some option of twenty-five three. Maybe it's Vista Bean, maybe it's satellite, maybe it's, you know, whatever. Um, but this application specifically for the people that don't have access to anything that could provide at least a minimum level of twenty-five.
So these other companies could go after the same money you're going after.
Absolutely.
Correct, yeah.
Yep, yep. And they, basically what they do is they take all the tier one applications and they consider those first. Again, those are the unserved. If, if people put in applications for locations that are already served, they can be considered, but not until all the tier one unserved or, you know, are funded first. Um, so then, you know, let's say three, four, or five companies apply for the same set of unserved app, uh, residences. Um, or, or the locations, I say residences, it's really broadband serviceable locations. So it could be a business or a, or a residence. But if multiple companies apply for the same area, they're basically going to look at the applications and score them, and they're going to award the grant based on the highest score. So.
But the other ones still have the opportunity, if, if they want to sell their, their product or their service to that individual, they could still do that, correct? If they want to do it on their own money.
Correct.
Right.
Yep, yeah.
That's the key.
Yeah, this is just simply about the funding of it, because these areas are really, really expensive to build with, with pretty low customer density, and it's kind of why they're not built now. You know, so when, when folks build fiber, they build where the highest density of customers are. That's why the city of Scottsbluff and Garing, good parts of it have access to fiber, but a lot of the air, the areas outside the city don't because it.
What, what I don't.
Cost per location.
What I don't understand is why hasn't this been done sooner? And, and the fact that, you know, farming is not like it used to be. You know, I mean, everything is done by computer, everything is done by the internet, everything is, and, and, and some of these folks have not had this or have limited access to it for a long time.
Well, those are, those are good questions.
Yeah. And I, you know, I'm just, I'm just just thinking out loud here.
Yeah, I, I can't answer, I guess, for anyone else as far as Vista Bean, uh, you know, for, you know, we've been around for quite a few years, but for a long time, our focus was primarily what they call fixed wireless. Um, so it's, you know, it's a lower cost solution. We can deploy it faster than fiber. Um, for quite a few years, you know, we felt like it was an adequate solution as customers' needs have changed and, you know, perhaps, you know, the way they consume content, lots of people are watching their TV on the internet now instead of, you know, instead on the, on the satellite or, or what have you. Those, you know, those needs of the, you know, the end, end user have kind of increased and we started to build fiber and had great success with it. You know, we completed a project in Chapel. It's, you know, been, it's been, it's been a pleasure. You know, we're, we're gearing up to try to do some other things and Bitch Old and Moral and Happy and some of these other towns around here, but, um, you know, I suppose why it hasn't been done sooner, maybe because the grant funds weren't there, uh, and it's so expensive to build. You know, I know for years, you know, Allo kind of had certain, you know, business case, uh, analysis they would do on, on whether something was suitable to build or not. Um, some of these areas are just super expensive. Without grant funds, it may, it's really hard to make a business case. You know, if you borrowed money to build some of these areas, you know.
And make it, and make a cost prohibitive to the customer.
Exactly, or, or you just would never make money and sustain it, so.
Sure, sure.
So, you know.
Well, I, I, I echo with what, what Mark said. I think anything we do to make life easier for, for the folks that don't have it now, obviously, I'm,
Yep.
I'm all for that. I have no problem with that. Whether it be you or anybody else, it doesn't matter.
I guess another way to look at it is this, this money that's been allocated by Capital Projects Funds in Nebraska is going to go to somebody somewhere in the state. We'd like some of it to come here where we, we all, you know, all of us here work and live here.
Makes, makes sense, makes sense. And you do have a, a form letter that we need to sign?
Yep.
No, that's not. It's not it. This, this is it right here. Is that it?
It is. And we could sign it like. Provide a digital copy.
Well, I like what this, I like what this said. No problem with that. Okay.
I've indicated earlier that I would update our information for you if you approve it.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds, sounds good to me.
I would move approval of the, um, letter to be signed by the chairman, um, with all of our information entered into this form.
Is there, we have a second?
All second.
I have.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Please record your votes. Thank you very much. Next item is consider designation of a 2024 official county newspaper table from the January second, 2024 meeting. Charlie, I'll let you take the lead on this one.
So I got a, I got some correspondence back from the business farmer and, um, they are, although they have a circulation over three hundred, you know, about twelve hundred, they don't have three hundred paid subscribers. So they don't meet the statutory guidelines to be our newspaper record.
So we, we're basically have one.
Okay. Stuck with, stuck with one option.
Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion then.
Is it still the Star Herald?
Yes.
I would move that we, um, choose Star Herald as the, um, county newspaper record.
Okay. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Is there any other discussion? Record your votes.
Okay, pause. Is it okay to pause?
Yeah, you're, you're up there.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Uh, next item is just consider designation. Okay. Consider designation of newspaper for 2024 delinquent taxless publication table from the January second meeting. Um, assuming we're in the same, what, what's?
Sorry, I'm over yon. I lost my.
The next, the next one, oh, for the taxless publication. I think Heather is here. You had a.
And she has.
And that falls under the same rules as that we have. Yes, Kelly?
So I have to do a notice of, a notice of offices to be filled prior to January thirty. I pulled what I did four years ago as a sample test of how we have to publish our notices now. It's different and I needed help. So I pulled the old one, three hundred and some dollars. Our estimated on this one that we're getting ready is under a hundred and fifty at this point. And just thought I'd throw that out there too.
And why is it?
It's less. I don't know. My little ones are more, but then this big, it's like three and a quarter by eight and a half is what four years ago it was. And it came in substantially less. But my, but my regular meetings has gone up almost double.
Billy.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion then?
I don't think we have any choice, so I guess I'll move to.
Take your pill.
Yeah. I'll move to designate, um, the Star Herald for the 2024 delinquent tax list publication.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Is there any further discussion? Record your votes.
Okay, to close?
Close.
And you have preferences?
Thank you. Next item is discuss, consider enacting a six-month moratorium on renewable energy conditional use permits with an option to extend an additional six months at July sixth, regular commissioner meeting. Charlie?
So this wouldn't affect any current applications, um, any current applications are still, they, they were made under the, the previous, um, comprehensive plan and zoning regulations. So this would just be for any new, um, applications. Think we need to do this until we get our comprehensive plan updated. Just, just to protect us as a county and like to comprehensive plan update. I think this is necessary. Uh, other counties across the state have done the same thing during, in the process of updating their, uh, comprehensive plan, they put these moratoriums in place. So I actually have two, I, two agenda items here, the same topic, basically. Um, one, I'll just go ahead and talk about both of them now. One is for specifically renewable energy projects. And then one is for all conditional use permits. I just wanted to, I think we need to do the renewable energy one for sure. In terms of all conditional use permits, I don't know. Um, I just wanted to put that on there to, you know, and kind of start a discussion for the board, um, to consider. Uh, because if we are going to be updating the comprehensive use or the comprehensive plan, then, um, it has to put a moratorium on all conditional use permits.
Bill, let me ask you a question. Is a comprehensive plan enforceable? What I mean enforceable, if it's something that doesn't quite fit into what your comprehensive plan is, does that next to prop, the, the project or is it a, a movable? Explain that to me between the comprehensive plan and your, your zoning regulations.
It'll become zoning regs, I believe.
Not necessarily.
It won't? It should become your zoning regs eventually. You should move them into your zoning regulations, wouldn't you?
A comprehensive plan is just a plan. It's just an idea. It's, we, go ahead. I'm, I'm gonna let.
I'll just read an excerpt from the American Planning Association document I found online, which I feel is the best explanation I could find in a short explanation. Is, it says, the comprehensive plan is a recommendatory document providing guidance and is often written abstractly so that appointed and elected officials can utilize a variety of means to implement it while only recommendatory, sorry, a failed speech class. And, uh, the value of a comprehensive plan is indicated by the community's desire to see its implementation. Now, here's the, but it, it is important to remember that a comprehensive plan and a zoning ordinance, which is your zoning regulations, are two separate tools that are used in conjunction with one another. The comprehensive plan acts as a guiding role and provides recommendations on how land should be utilized to meet the needs and desires of the community, whereas a zoning ordinance regulates land uses as recommended by the plan. So all of your regulatory actions are controlled by your zoning regulations.
Can't we, which, can't we put anything in the zoning regulations that we want? If we build a comprehensive plan, can it be moved into the regs?
You can amend your zoning regulations at any point. And I was gonna say that if you want to just address the energy stuff right now, we have a separate energy element that was required by the state. We could just address the energy element of the comprehensive plan at this time and then go in later and do the rest of it, which would save a lot of time. If we just wanted to address the energy element. And then at the same time, if you wanted to add in some new restrictions on the actual zoning regulation.
I don't know. We call them restrictions, but I'd like to see some guidelines.
Right. And that's what you.
I don't want to make it too restrictive.
I would say provisions would be better than just saying restrictions. You make provisions.
And you, and you update those as, on a regular basis, don't you, Bill? Does yours only regulations?
Probably twelve to fifteen, last, maybe ten, twelve years.
Yeah.
Yeah. We've been, you do it as they arise.
Absolutely.
And obviously as, uh, the, the industry evolves. So, but in this case, we could just go right to the energy element. And I think accomplish what you want to do without having to go through the rest of the comprehensive plan at this time.
So another question I got was, I believe cities and townships and villages, they have to update their comprehensive plan every twenty years or.
I've never seen where there's ever been.
Yeah, there's, I don't, I don't know if there's ever been.
I guarantee there's in this, this county alone, there's probably a handful that have never updated since the ones they adopted initially. Like we adopted ours in nineteen seventy. It was twenty-six years before we did our second one, which is our current comprehensive plan rating. I would say the average is right around twenty to twenty-five.
And I, and I think the point, the point that we need to keep in mind is, is the difference between the comprehensive plan and the zoning regulations. Comprehensive plan is a plan. That's all it amounts to. The zoning regulations are, are what's going to require.
Build some regulations that will support the, the comprehensive plan. That's, that's our job is to get some regulations in place. We, we're protecting the people that are joining these properties, not so much the people that are building these projects, but the people that are joining these projects.
I, and, and I don't have a problem with that at all. But, but you can do that through your zoning regulations without, without, without the comprehensive plan that we're talking about.
I agree. I, I, but I think we need to put some outline together that we're going to move into that zoning regulations. And I think by doing what Charlie wants to do, it allows us to put some things together that we can incorporate into the reg, the regs. Because without having any idea what we're doing, we've got to have some sort of a format.
How new is the, the, the renewable one that we did, that you adopted?
I, two thousand twelve.
Wow, okay.
Somewhere around.
So it's, so it's probably needs to be looked at and up, updated because of all the, the activity surrounding the renewable energy stuff. Yeah. Yeah.
Predominant.
Right. Right.
Sure wouldn't hurt.
Yeah.
And at the same time, we could address the regulations at the same time as we do the comp plan also.
Right.
But we could just narrow it down to a much smaller scope than, I mean, most places. When you're talking about rehauling your general comprehensive plan, might be a year and a half or deal.
Okay.
That would be my.
That's why we'd want to put the moratorium in so we don't, so we have that in place. I think we need to have something in, to hold this back until we have something in place. Most of these projects take a year to two to three years to implement anyway. And I mean, it's not a, not a big deal. It gives us a chance to get some things in, in writing.
So just, just let me ask a clarifying question. It's my understanding then that with a new comprehensive plan, we would have a new set of zoning regulations.
Yeah, two separate deals.
Two separate deals.
Completely.
But we could.
We can integrate.
With a new comprehensive plan, we should also update our zoning.
Yeah, you definitely could. It's depending on what your goals are.
Depending on what the trends are.
You change your comprehensive plan. You may get in there and actually not maybe but five percent of it. I mean, all of our stuff's ag related here. It's all gold. We're, we're an ag community, ag business. That's what most of that comp plan says.
But you've already said it, Bill. I mean, back in, when, whenever this renewable energy was, was brought forth, they, they were talking more, more of the wind energy and not so much as the solar. Now we're adding solar to it and there may be something else down along the line. I have no problem with keeping up with current standards with what's, with, with what is going to happen. What I don't want to do is to stop progress either. Because we can, there's, if we have something in place now that is going to address every, let me, let me re, restate my question. What we have in place now, is that suitable? And is it enough to cover what is happening as of right now?
As far as our regulations go?
Yes, as far as your regulations.
In my opinion, I feel like it. I feel like we have the resources and other, we've basically had communication with, uh, energy professionals for a long time, been going to training down at the, you know, in Kearney, going to the zoning workshops, like what you kind of want to. And, uh, I just feel like, uh, we have the experience of the planning commission and the board of commissioners to be able to actually draft provisions which will protect the people and the lands of Scottsbluff County.
So you're saying we could stop this whole thing? This board could stop this whole?
It stopped.
This board could stop this project right now? If we chose to. The way it looks to me like this thing is on a set of railroad tracks that's coming right through the door that we don't, we can't even slow it down to me.
I don't think you can do it right now. Uh, I mean, you mean as far as.
Once it's on the agenda.
Well, you, as far as any future, I don't think there was any intent.
That's what I'm saying. So what we have right now is not working, Bill. You gotta tell us. I mean, seriously, it's not working. If we don't have any control of what's going on here, it's not working. We don't have control of this project that's coming down the pipe right now.
Sure you do. It's got to go to the planning commission first.
Yeah, and it'll be approved.
Whatever they make their recommendation, and that's all it is, is just a recommendation.
Okay.
Right? So then it comes in front of the board of commissioners, which they.
What, what, what is your concern with this?
Well, my concern is out there, and I've done a lot of research on this stuff. Um, what, the way it thermal heats, superheats the soil, the ground.
I think, I just want to hold off on that thought right now.
Okay.
Because I think that probably falls under the, um, supplemental review agenda item. But we could just, if we could just take care of the moratoriums first.
Okay.
And then I think, I think that's probably discussion.
Right.
That's, that's kind of where I'm at right now. It's just, I think, the morium on a new conditional use permits until for at least six months.
I think so.
And I would like to make sure that it gets on the agenda for review to, with an option to extend, um, on this July sixth meeting. So that's my motion is to, um, enact a six-month moratorium on renewable energy conditional use permits.
Okay. So we have a motion. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second him.
All right. We can continue with the discussion.
So if I understand it correctly, and I, I guess, uh, I've heard several people say that, um, this particular application that we have already would fall under whatever previous, um, plan that we had, and this moratorium would not affect them.
That's right. Can affect, it can't affect anything previous, a permit applied for a previous can affect.
But would affect any, anybody else that wanted to come in?
Yeah.
Well, they can't even take out. They can't even take out a permit for it with this motion.
That's correct until we get, we get some zoning in, in flow. We have no zoning in place to protect it.
What, what zoning are you working on, on your conditional use right now? Are you working out off of zoning regulations?
Exactly. It's as stated in Nebraska statute for that matter.
Right.
Those, those parts are.
And the renewable.
Change on that, but there's some other things that we can.
And then, and the renewable energy piece of that is also being used in this, in their decision making, correct?
Sure. What, what protection do they have for adjoining landowners and all of that?
As far as.
Far as what protection does it join you land?
Well, I mean, it, so that's what you're going to do in your conditions, when you do your restrictions and conditions, then you'll actually have a list. Some of them are called site specific. So what you do is depending on the location, you might, you can have different variables depending on the location. So you'll do site specific restrictions on it. Setbacks, for instance, how far they are off property lines is something that you talk about. But I know in this case, but we're going to end up doing for anything, and these are general conditions. It's going to be something like where you may have, uh, mutual aid agreements with your emergency responder.
Oh, yeah.
How they're going to be able to work together if there is a fire or something like that.
But these things have came up since this, those are not in your plan right now. These are things that have came up since this has taken hold, right?
There's questions that have come up, right? That's whole, that's.
But it's like, this has all came up since the process. I mean, this has came up since the application. It's not something that's already been in our zoning, right?
No, we don't have anything specific.
That's right.
Conditions are actually, we were able to make those conditions as the process.
As the process is going.
We can make those provisions because this is conditional. And we're, we can make conditions. So we can add all of those things that you're talking about can be added as part of the condition.
You got that.
For them to get the conditional permit. So it's not like we're shut out of being able to do that. We're able to do it.
Actually, the.
It would come from the planning.
Statute gives you that authority to do.
One, one, one of the concerns was the, the highway, the, the.
The road, yeah.
And that, that could be part of that.
It needs to be part of it because if it starts blowing that road shut, it needs to be maintained.
And that's fine. That's something that they can be, they can address.
So I, I agree with Charlie to the extent that, um, it's easy to get focused on that project, but we're not focusing on that for this question. This question is, are we going to do a six-month moratorium on renewable energy conditional permits? That's the question.
Yes.
Right now.
All right.
And what's it going to buy us? Will you explain to what, what it buys us, Charlie? And what's it going to buy us? Will you explain to what, what it buys us, Charlie?
Buys us time to adopt a new comprehensive plan with, with corresponding changes to our zoning provisions. So, because the renewable energy appendix of our current comprehensive plan was designed to address wind and not solar. So I want to, I want our new comprehensive plan to address.
Everything.
Everything we know about renewable energy is up to today.
And it's not just renewable energy. I mean, it's any energy.
But are we not addressing that now with this conditional use permit?
I, we could definitely, I'm sure, update that energy element for sure.
Yeah, that needs.
On anything new? Not on this one?
No, in the future, right? Would definitely wouldn't hurt to update that. As far as if you want to do anything with the actual zoning regulations and narrow that down a little bit.
Can that, can that be done without having, could that be done without having a moratorium?
Anything can, but it might take six months or a year to get it done.
Here's my concern is, is that we had a, we had an application come in, permit fee was paid. And we don't have anything in place to, I know we go, we have the conditional use process. But we didn't have anything in place for this board to be made apprised of the permit process before the permit was made. They, in, I believe in in a perfect scenario, this board, the planning commission would have been made aware of the permit prior to the application fee being paid. And and that is that is my, that's part of the reason for the moratorium. Because we don't have. Cause right now, all we have is the conditional use process, that volley back and forth between the commissioners and the planning commission to set these conditions in place. I would like these conditions to be known to the applicant. But prior to their application.
That's where we're short.
You know, I'm trying to think about each city and I suspect whether it's a village or whatever, we talk about a two mile zoning jurisdiction. So I'm assuming they're controlling anything within their two mile limit just as we had the one out here at CS Precision. I'm assuming the city of Gearing dealt with that. We had the one up by the soccer fields. I'm assuming the city of Scottsbluff dealt with that. I'm assuming we didn't deal with those.
No, we wouldn't.
From the county standpoint, would that be? They did because it was within their two miles.
In their jurisdiction.
Right. So I don't know that we've dealt with any of these yet. Do we have, we don't have any windmills in Scottsbluff County, do we?
Not on a commercial basis.
So my point is, is that from a practical standpoint, one of the biggest issues we deal with many times that is adversarial and that's feedlot stuff. And that's what we normally end up having to go through the process and hear the pros and the cons and all of those things. How does it affect neighbors? I, I don't know that there's a decommissioning process with those. There is. But so how, how we deal with those exactly? But I'm trying to figure out the similarity. And again, we're dealing with in almost every situation, ag land or, and or some commercial along the highway twenty six or some other places where and or some more dense residential areas that, that certainly you have to deal with on a regular basis. I guess I'm also of the opinion that I just want to be careful that we don't restrict projects that are good and viable. I have no idea about this one specifically. I just heard about a project that they were buying thousands of acres for a combined project to do both solar like this. And it was very similar, four hundred and twenty megawatt, I think, facility. And then they were also doing a hydrogen plant where they were extracting hydrogen from water molecules. And using it for hydrogen energy. And they were doing that all in close proximity to each.
That would be a real good project there. I would agree with that.
That was, and that's, that was interesting.
That'd be a really good project because you're not going to ratchet power up and down. You can take the power as it comes, produce your product and contain your product.
So anyway, I'm not sure that in and of itself that we're gonna have any other applications in the next six months. And I mean, in an effort to help deal with the concerns, it would at least give some assurance, I guess, to commissioners that our current way of doing things doesn't allow someone to come in and be able to do something that we don't want them to do. I'm not so sure that our process and our permitting and planning commission ultimately coming to us, when the planning commission acts upon it, Bill, is that to act upon the, the permit? Recommendation of a permit?
For the conditional use permit.
Isn't it generally, they do the research, the legwork for us and save us all that background work?
That's what the statute.
And we went to that meeting, not one of those fellows had read, not one bit of that application. And they were, that night they were, I think, were ready to vote on it. They would have approved it and not read it.
Yeah, I don't know if they're ready to vote. I think they're just there to basically take questions, see what the.
Wasn't, wasn't, wasn't it on the agenda to be approved that night?
Well, it's always on there for consideration, one way or the other.
And generally when it's there for consideration, you either approve or disapprove, so.
So here, here's the other part of my concern is, is we have a planning commission. And forgive me if I'm wrong, but I guess this is a big assumption on my part. But we have a planning commission that or not a single person on that commission has experience building solar powered plants.
Cause our list of different conditional use permits is twenty five deeps. You're never going to have anybody who's a professional on every one of those commercial uses.
Right. So, and I, I don't think that, I don't think it's realistic to have a planning commission first and, you know, solar and feedlot and, and wind and, and hydrogen and water. I don't think it's realistic. And that's why we need a comprehensive plan and correlating zoning provisions that, that help guide this commission and, and guide this board of commission. We lack that right now.
Did, when this permit was applied for, did it meet our current zoning regulations with, with the provisions?
I mean, there, it doesn't start off with provisions. We gave them a list and said, this is what we want you to bring, which was the hundred and seventy seven page was all about. They gave us, this is what we want, which we obtained from correspondence with the energy.
Is there an environmental impact study in that? I know there, there's a varmit impact study, but it doesn't say anything what it's going to do to the soils and what it's going to do to that grass when that gets superheated out.
There's a stormwater plan in there. There's a vegetation plan in there. It has to actually get approved. The NDE, the Department of Energy Environment for the stormwater plan. So any runoff from that would actually have to go through an approval process from them. I know game and parks is involved in it, wildlife.
So that, that, that is your environmental plan.
There was water plan, there was an animal plan.
But the envi, the environmental study takes in a lot of things, just like he, just like he was talking about.
I didn't see a lot about temperature of the ground, earth soil temperature when this thing is all enforced.
You have you had any other companies inquire about this type of?
In the last ten years, I've probably had ten of them that have called and I, you never hear back from them. Sometimes you hear back, you know, it's been going on since they've had subsidies. Let's face it.
No, I'll call it seriously active potential applicant.
I had one a while back. They were asking about, I sent them our regulations and I haven't heard back. I don't know if there's a, there, I believe in the exploratory stage right now.
I'm trying to just figure out in my mind, this six month moratorium, does it affect?
I don't have any information for you on that. I haven't been told by anybody that.
Do you, at the time that a permit is taken out? Or you, you received the phone call, the permit has been applied for. You supply the planning commission with the necessary rules and regulations concerning that particular permit?
That's part of the, as far as going into the public hearing, then you would give them, this is the regulations. Usually take something out of the comprehensive plan, show them it's either consistent or not, or both.
Does it meet the zoning requirements? Does it, whatever it is?
But what we've always done on all these other conditional use permits is exactly what we're looking at doing here. Is you listen to it, then you draft your conditions accordingly to site specifics. One of them depends on where they're at. Sometimes it may be closer to a highway, maybe you're closer to some more residences. Well, higher density population area. So usually you're going to have a little bit of variable in your conditions, your provisions.
So your planning commission is aware of whatever that project is. You have given them whatever information they need to have to make a educational or a.
Sure. I mean, you, so we gave them the, basically it was the project plan. That was the hundred and seventy seven page.
And no one read it.
So I'm assuming they at least went through it to a certain degree. There was a lot of technical stuff in there. But anyway, so you give them that, then you hear the testimony from the applicants, which in this case was the engineering firm that prepared the, the plan. So, and then at this rate, well, there were several questions that needed to be answered. We just tabled it, which is what you always do. And then now they've started to, I emailed you guys, my first response from them. And I, I know that in particular, the Citrus is now looking at doing a, a public forum on February twenty second. So they're going to invite members of the public to announce, we could do more education on it. And I wish they would have done that to begin with. I actually told them that they should do that, but. And if I'm going to say what Charlie's talking about would be great because we could put stipulations on. Cause I, I told them they should do it, but we really didn't have anything in there. So they could definitely put something in there. It says you need to do A, B, C and D.
That's where we're at right now. I agree with that. That's what we really need to do. It's take a little time.
And that, I wish I could have had that because then I could have made them do it.
You're talking about it, the comprehensive plan or the zoning?
It would be in the regulations.
That's where it needs to be. I agree with that. But the way we are right now, if we get another application tomorrow morning, he hands that out, we're in the same boat as we're in right now. Nothing changes. I would like to see that moratorium so we can get these adjustments. I agree with Bill that we need those in there. And this would give us six months to get that in. And I don't think that's asking a lot.
We're talking just strictly renewable energy.
Yes, that's all.
Permits, right? Well, there's dual monitor.
That's all.
Can I ask a question? So maybe I missed this. So this could be a county. We can make our own list of requirements. It's not statute driven that we have to follow the state statute.
I wouldn't think we would.
Make their own conditions and provision. Yeah, they don't, the state stat, the statute doesn't actually have those provisions.
We would add our own.
They're doing it per the project.
And I agree and I, and they're definitely. They're definitely, they are definitely.
And though there are certainly, as you said earlier, lots of other state requirements such as the NDE.
Give me an example when we get into feedlot stuff. Ninety percent of that is already regulated by state in Nebraska in the NDEQ. Half of what they're looking at, any of these types will be regulated by also the state.
So, so there are regulations in place, not so much, mostly feedlot stuff, I believe.
But even in like these, as far as the energy stuff goes, there, there's, I would say fifty percent of what was in there in the plan was regulated by some government agency other than the local agency.
Energy that we're working on right now, correct?
We need to represent our local landlord. We need to have some things in place. And I don't think we're going to have for a while, but we need, definitely need some, some things included.
Well, specifically on this item, it's enacting a six month moratorium on renewable energy conditional use permits. And you've said even tonight, Bill, that you wouldn't have a problem with that. That it could help you get some other things built in for requirements for future application.
If nothing else, just for your application process.
Right. And it gives us a little time to get prepared, I guess, better. I, so to that extent, part of what you have said here tonight, certainly some of the other concerns. I'm not, I'm not having a problem with a six month moratorium on that specific issue. I might have on the next item.
How, how long is it going to, how long will it take you to update the renewable energy requirements? That evidently we don't have in our regulations now. That's what I'm hearing. Is that correct?
Well, if we're talking, doing both the energy element of the comprehensive plan and the regulations, I, I don't know why.
Comprehensive, the comprehensive plan is not a rule regulation. It's a plan. What we need to think about is putting teeth into our regulations. If that's, if that's what we're, if that's what we're going after. The comprehensive plan could go another five years without anybody touching it and it's still going to work, right?
I agree.
It's gone for twenty years now and, and hasn't been touched. Right, okay.
I've never been a real advocate of comprehensive plans.
That makes two of us, to be honest with you. That makes two of us, because it doesn't have any teeth in it.
We need to get the zoning corrected.
But, but if you need time, if you need time to update your regulations to add whatever it is that we're missing, I don't know what that is yet, but, but I think you made a good point when you said that a majority of these rules and regulations on renewable energy are dictated to the state and federal government. Is that not correct?
Up to when we get to our own.
Sure. So what would happen is the planning commission would then review, come up with some different, in this case, I'd say you do it at the application level, requirements when the applications.
Conditional use permit. Those things could be added, whatever it is that we're, that we're lacking, whatever, whatever those are, correct?
So then, well, you, then what they would do is then, that through a public hearing process, then make recommendation as towards which of those they want, which will then come to the county board and then your file on season.
Okay. So with the present regulations that we have, okay, we can cover whatever concerns anybody else has as far as our county is concerned. Would that be a correct statement?
Sure.
In the conditional use, right?
And you just talking about energy or we're talking about?
I'm talking about just energy right now. Cause evidently we're missing something or whatever, whatever it is, that could be included in that right as of now. Whatever we. Whatever we want. Okay? And then in the meantime, in the meantime, we could even, we could update our renewable energy. Rules and regulations, whatever it is they're missing. So we still have control. We still have control.
We still have control on setbacks and things, right?
Yeah, that's all. That's actually gets written into the site specific conditions of the.
That's right. So if, if there is something, if there is something that we need to add to this particular permit, we can still do that. We can still do that on this, on this permitting process.
Well, that's fine, but I'd, I'd like to have it in black and white on the front end of the next one. If it's, if that's dual, you know.
But it may, well, no, okay, nevermind. That's all right.
No, what are you saying, Ken?
I'm, I'm just saying it may not a, apply. It, we, we, we need, we need to concentrate on this one first.
Well, that, we're working on the next one.
I, and, and I, and I understand, but there's, there isn't a set of rules and regulations that cover everything that's going to happen. I guess that's my point.
You're right. I agree with that.
And, and if we can control that, if we have a basic set of, of rules and regulations, which we have with our renewable. Uh, energy statutes that we're working under both state and federal. And if there's something else that is more site specific. Whether it be setbacks, whether it be, uh.
Concerned about drainage issues.
Whatever, whatever it is, that could be added to that, to that permit, even this permit, we, we're, we're still not done with it. So we can still add some things to that.
So. Planning Commission established some conditions. Wants to enact more than they can even put more.
In regards, in, in, in regards to that permit.
That's right. Right. Sure.
So we still have the authority. That's what, that's my point.
I think that's what I would suggest here too, is that there's been some suggestion that we've lost all control and all authority. On this application. And I don't think that's true. I think we're still in the process and we still can control things.
I, you know, I, I don't know that he's gonna come to us with a whole bunch of things that we, the changes that we can make. Uh, he's gonna come to us with a up or down vote on, are we gonna accept this or not? And that's how it's gonna come to be approved. It's how we approve everything else around here.
You guys, Bill, sometimes you say, uh, contingent upon this addition to a contract or. The resolu- whatever the case may be to the permit, you would be able to do that. Correct, Bill?
I understood Bill to just say is that we could add to the conditions. Or take away from the conditions however we agreed and felt as a group.
Yeah, they're, they're just a board of recommendation and they're your advisory board. So. You, you're actually the ones who approve the conditions.
Would it, would it be to our benefit to, if there are something that, that are over and above the conditions that you've already talked about?
Put maybe just some standard things, items that would need to be on the application. I feel that would probably be a bonus.
Right. But, 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 but we're also talking about additional concerns. Evidently we have additional concerns. That haven't been addressed. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's right.
Could, and, and, and we still have the time to do that on this permit.
True.
Yes. Okay. So we still have control over it, Mark. We're, we're not.
It's continually moving.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And we can either approve or disapprove it when it comes here. But my suggestion would be in order to save time is that if you have a specific concern. That we address that with, with Bill and the planning commission, that it gets included with those conditional use.
Well, that's why I'd like to see us, you know, enact this. Moratorium to where we have time to put some things together. By the time this thing comes to us, we'll have an idea of what those items are. Cause at, at this point in time, we haven't had a, a community, any community input as far as the county's been on this. And when this vote comes to be, this room will be full.
Well, they're going to do a forum.
Yeah.
Uh, they'll be. We're not talking about the current permit.
I understand that.
They keep.
But, but we're, but we're, but that seems to be a concern is the current, the one that's, that we're working on right now.
It provides a good example in, in the. So we have these conditions that we can add to or take away from this, or a permit. And my goal with this moratorium is to have some basic building blocks in place or the next permit to follow so that we're not. So that they're, that, so that they're, they are in place and that the applicant knows they must meet these conditions before they apply.
When we send them out to do their application, they know that these are implemented.
And, and, and even the for next application will still be a conditional use permit and they will. Even after this much moratorium ends and we, and we have in place the, the, the foundations of. The zoning and, and conditions that we're gonna have for these, these projects. Um, and there's still gonna be items that we take off and add to, and there's gonna be other conditions, but. This moratorium gives us time to put in place a structure or a foundations. Um, cause right now there is none. I mean, we're, it's like we're, it's like we're in a sandbox trying to build something. And, and, you know, with this, there's, there's no framework whatsoever. So it's like we're piecemealing. This whole conditional use permit together, one piece at a time is.
I agree.
And that's not how we should be going about it. I think we need to have the basic structure in place before we get another application.
We, okay, I'm, I'm disagreeing a little bit on that, Charlie, and the fact that when that permit was applied for, there are a set of rules and regulations and standards. That, that the planning commission had to work off of. Would that be a correct statement?
As far as the actual procedure goes.
Right.
It's in our zoning regulations and also in statute.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
And we have, you have federal guidelines and you have state guidelines that need to be adhered to on the, on this permit.
What you take into account.
Right. Okay.
Procedure.
I would disagree with that because I'm gonna ask you, what do you have planned for decommissioning?
Uh, well, I mean, at this point, nothing's been through the planning commission. But my recommendation would be that you hire a firm that specializes in the decommissioning process. They would write a report, figure out the cost. And then every 10 years or whatever term you want, you revisit.
Shouldn't that be in our conditional use permit?
That would be, isn't it? That should be in the regulations before the application even gets turned in. I mean, the fact that we have to add this to the conditional use permit is. Is just one extra hurdle that, that we shouldn't have, we shouldn't have to jump through after the permit is made. That should be known to the applicant before the permit is made. And that's why I want this moratorium in place. And yes, we do have these, we do have these, um. Regulations and, and these, these other, you know, these, the zoning and stuff that he can, that. He can follow or the applicant can follow, but they're from nineteen ninety seven. And the appendix that was made in two thousand and twelve was ma- mainly to address wind. We don't, it's twenty twenty three. We need to have the twenty point four. Um, we need to have something updated. That's, that's why.
And, and I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you at all. Because it'll.
We, we gotta have some, some teeth in this thing to where we got like that, we're not, the county isn't stuck cleaning it up.
Has anybody bothered to ask the company whether these things are being addressed?
The company.
We haven't met with the company.
I figured we're gonna hear all about that back here on this item, but, um, yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right. We, and, and we can do that. Okay. Is there a, you've got a motion already, right? Do we have a second on the motion?
I second it.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, record your votes.
Okay, close?
Close.
You have four yeses and one no.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right. Next item is, uh. Discuss, consider the enactment of a six month moratorium on all conditional use permits with an option to extend an additional. Six months at the July sixth regular commission. Charlie, got it again.
So, um, with this one, uh, based on the, on the discussion on this last one. I, I don't wanna put a moratorium on all initial use permits. Um, we have the, we have the process available to us. I think if we, uh, to make the conditions to each permit, um, I don't wanna hold up progress. Um, and a six month moratorium, I think is, is, is not necessary here. So my, um. Motion here is to, um. Do I need a motion to, to just?
There, we take no action?
Take no, I have a motion to take no action.
I have a motion to take no action on this item. Is there a second?
All second.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes.
Mine didn't go either. Think.
Okay, close?
Okay. Thank you for the discussion. Brings a lot of things to light. Okay. Next item is discuss and consider hiring Keith Marvin Consulting for three thousand dollars to provide supplemental review on. Well, I'm, I'm troubled by Situla. That's pronounced.
Situla.
Situla. Energies conditional use permit for solar energy project.
Is he here or is he gonna be on the phone?
Uh, I believe we had.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, is, is, uh.
I need to use the restroom.
Okay. Let's, let's, let's take a, just a short five minute here and then we'll, then we'll come back. Cause I believe that we have. Who, who did I talk to on the phone yesterday? Scott. Is Scott here? Scott's in the back. Okay. You're gonna be a part of this, right? I'm assuming. Okay. I, and I, I apologize. I was gonna get here. Uh, we are on the agenda item. I'm sorry. Oh, I didn't see. I'm sorry. 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 Uh, on the agenda item to discuss, consider hiring Keith Marvin Consulting for three thousand to provide supplemental review. Uh, for Situla Energies conditional use permit on solar energy project. Charlie, you're on again.
So. Yeah, go ahead. So Keith Marvin was hired by McCook. To provide a supplemental review of a similar per- permit, uh, down in Red Willow County. Um. Keith Marvin has. A couple of decades experience, um, working on both sides of the fence for. Hey, Keith.
Keith, it's Kelly Seitz, Scotts Bluff County Clerk, and I've got Commissioner Kinnison for you. Our chairman of the board is Ken Meyer.
Okay.
So Charlie, if you could talk and make sure he can hear you.
Keith, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Keith, this is Charlie. We spoke on the phone last week and I, I asked the clerk to add you to our agenda. I've added an, an, an agenda item here. Discuss and consider hiring Keith Marvin Consulting for three thousand dollars to provide a supplemental review. Of Situla Energies conditional use permit in Scotts Bluff County.
Okay.
Um, I was, I was just giving an overview, um, to the board of, um, why I believe this is necessary. Um, and, and my, my thought process here is, uh, nobody on our planning commission. Or on the board of commissioners has ever, uh, been a part of a project of this size or scope. Um, and it would be, it would be beneficial to us to hire, hire you for consulting. Uh, for the supplemental review to, uh, kinda shine a light. On where we might have risk or exposure. Um, this is a conditional use permit that has been, um, submitted. And as we understand, conditional use permits can be, um, amended. Um, you know, kind of a, a back and forth. Volley to, uh, like the word volley, back and forth, um, between the parties to get, um. To get concerns ironed. So, um, being that we haven't been through this before, we, I, I thought, you know, you'd be a good, um, resource for us to, to hire.
Okay. Um, I guess. We've got a team right now of three planners in the office and one of them is John Shepherd. Uh, John has nearly thirty years of experience and most of that has been. In the public sector and working in major county zoning offices. And he's reviewed numerous different permits and, uh, for compliance and identifying things where things need to be. Uh, discussed and forwarded, like you said, just and discussed back and forth. Uh, we did a similar thing for the benefit of the board with Red Willow County. When we just updated their solar regs, uh, but we've also done a similar thing with the city of McCook. Where they had a large solar farm come through and we actually, uh, you know, right or wrong, we dug in and found some things that. Either the applicant or the city was finding just because of the review process that we did on that. Uh, and the other thing that we're doing, we're also working right now with Hamilton County. On a green, uh, Anhydrous project that they're looking at in their county and going through that review process as well. So this is something that we're familiar with, doing these type of processes. Uh, we don't only just write the codes, but we actually understand the whole concept of enforcing them and, uh. Reviewing applications as need be. So, uh, the thing that I proposed is right in line with what we've done with McCook. Uh, we never did make a threat to McCook. Every, all the corresponding meetings that we had with staff. Uh, and we sat in on planning commission and city, uh, council meetings, uh, we were able to do via Zoom. So we, we can save some money for you at travel time. Uh, if, if we have to travel, then that cost goes up considerably for you folks. Uh, so, uh, we've had success doing this and doing it through Zoom.
Is WebEx an option?
WebEx, we, we can do anything you need us to do. I mean, I think I've done WebEx before.
Okay. That's our platform that we're subscribed to.
Okay. Yeah. Some for common, that's, you know, a little bit of security, uh, over there, but. Familiar with Web, WebEx and those type of things, we can do those as well. You would probably have to generate the, uh, the, uh, the video link for us so that we could pop on, but that's fine.
Uh, Keith, this is Ken Meyer. We got, can you, uh, just briefly give us a, uh. Uh, an idea of, of what your experience is in this, in this stuff?
Okay. Well. As I tell people, um, growing up in the Omaha area, I never thought I would be doing. Uh, as much with counties as I have over my career. Uh, I tell people I learned more about pavement than I ever thought I would as growing up in high school. Um, we've worked, between myself and John, we have worked with well over eighty counties. Throughout the Mountain West and the Midwest and such, the different things. We've written town plans in. Five or six different states. So, I mean, learning new regulations and new statutes. And going through and understanding your rules are not a big issue. So, uh, both John and I have done this a long time. And done with a lot of different counties. So. Uh, I, I haven't done it count lately, but I'm, I'm guessing I'm probably pushing. Between fifty and sixty counties in Nebraska that I've worked with in some capacity or another in my career.
And, and how many would you think are specific to? And, and how many would you think are specific to, uh, uh, renewable energy?
We're, we're working with codes. We're, we're writing renewable energy. So, I mean, when we're tracking it, we are researching it to make sure that we stay on top of everything that's going on. Uh, you know, the thing about it is your facility proposed has got some battery storage. That's one of the things that's certainly new. We've, uh, reached out to people that we know in different places like O P P D and that to find out what particulars are on battery storage so that we can be educated on what needs to be considered when these applications come forward. So, uh, I will tell you that we have a model solar regulation that I wrote. And we use it for both cities and counties that we wrote for the city of Hastings. Uh, we did that in conjunction with the planner at the time that they had as well as in conjunction with some developers that I knew and trusted that I, that I would get straight scoops from when it came, then questions that we had about the industry as a whole. So we try to be innovative. We've worked with different things. I, I wrote, uh, back in, uh, early 2000s, I probably, I wrote one of the first longer term or long, uh, page, uh, zoning regulations for wind energy in the state of Nebraska that became a model for a long time. And it's still partially there, but it's getting tweaked by different counties by, in different ways. And so, uh, but we've, we've been involved with this for quite a while.
Keith, this is Mark Harris, the Commissioner. Um, so is your primary, um, expertise then in, uh, planning and, um, planning, zoning and comprehensive plans? Um, you're, you're not an engineering firm, right?
No, we're not. We don't do, all we do is planning.
Okay.
So, and what we, so what we will do with this is we know how to, we write zoning codes and, and we work hard to make them so they're workable and usable. And we know how to go through and walk through an application and compare it to the zoning codes to find out what actually needs to be done and what, uh, may be missing. So, uh, like I said, we're not an engineering firm. I, I am a, uh, I've got a master's degree in, uh, community regional planning out of U N L. John has two planning degrees, one out of Illinois and then one out of U C Denver. Uh, and the other person on our staff has got a master's in planning at K State. So we've got a diverse group of people and edge from an education standpoint as well.
Well, one of the things that, uh, my thought process was when it was mentioned that we might be, um, interested in looking for someone. I, to me, this subject and this project is beyond, um, any layperson's knowledge as to, um, what kind of issues that we'll even be facing, um,
Yeah.
with this project. And it seemed to me that we needed to hire a professional to look out for our interest, our constituents' interests. And, um, it seems like, uh, um, someone with your expertise, along with a discussion that we just had about, um, our comprehensive plan and then those regulations that could go with that that would help, um, help deal with future applications that we have.
Yes.
And, um,
Yeah. The first underlying question on this, does it even meet your zoning codes? And have they provided you with all the information you need to make a good decision? Sort of. This, it, it, it begins with a very basic zoning premise. Uh, but you've got, you know, like you said, this is a big project and it's going to have a lot of moving parts. So it needs to be gone through, trying to comb. And that's something, uh, you know, myself, but more John on our team is very good at. And I mean, like I said, I, he comes to me, is my reading this right and this and that? And, uh, then we come to a, uh, concurrence and we'll come back to you. If we've got questions, we're going to say, okay, our, you know, we went, well, with this case of McCook, they had a city attorney, but they also, the city manager was the city attorney as well. So we said, we're reading it this way. Do you read it that way as well? So we were able to go back and say, okay, here's how we're interpreting this. To you, from a legal standpoint, do you have it? Because ultimately we're not going to tell you how to decide. We're going to tell you what you need to look at it, what needs to be a part of the application to move forward.
Right.
How you do it is going to eventually come down to planning commission and the county board.
Keith, what, what is your, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. I was done.
I, I was just going to ask you, what's your timeline would be, uh, with, with this, with this particular permit in this company?
I think it's somewhere between third, 30 and 75 days.
Can you narrow that down a bit more?
Yeah.
Maybe 30 to 45?
Available at the moment. So my thought is we could probably get it in closer to the 30 to 45 days.
Okay. Now, do you, do you communicate directly with, in this particular case, uh, Citula?
You want to go through your, through your zoning administrator? That's okay. Uh, so we, we are at your disposal. Work for you. That's how you choose it. You're our client, not them.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Blue. I have a, a question. Uh, does your review or recommendations, uh, make any, uh, does it address the unique safety issues in a, uh, solar powered facility like this, especially the, uh, uh, battery storage facility? And it?
Preach a decent bit because, you know, they do use lithium batteries and lithium batteries can be volatile if not done properly. So those are the types of things that we need to keep an eye on and work with.
Okay. Bill, you're still here?
No problem.
But have you got any questions, Bill, or concerns? Would you, would you, would that, would this be helpful to you to get what it is that we're, we've talked about for the last hour? Okay. Okay. So that we could continue moving the process forward.
I agree.
Still doing, still doing what needs to be done and still having another set of eyes looking at it, I guess. Okay. Okay. That's good to know. Okay. Okay.
I think right at this point, basically all we need is a motion to, uh, move forward with a, with the, with the three, is it $3,000 that we're after here?
Do we have a contract?
Is there, yeah, is there a contractor review?
You know, we want to do things. So if you want to communicate to me how you want to communicate with the developer, let, uh, send me an email tomorrow if you would. That way I can include that in there as well.
I, I, I don't know how the rest of the guys feel, but I'm, I'm thinking if you communicate directly with our building zoning director, uh, with that, right? Cause we, we would be your client, not, not Citula. Is that correct? Okay.
I think the reference should be attached.
That's fine. However you want to do it.
Like before.
I, I, there's a lot of folks here, uh, and Scott is from Citula. Do you have anything to add to any of this, Scott? Or, or would you, are you okay with having a, a third set of eyes, second set of eyes looking at this stuff?
Scott Dickis, I'm VP of, uh, Business Development for Dunley, the developer behind the, the project. I mean, in a, in, in, at a general level, uh, we're very supportive of, of any efforts that the board wants to make in terms of working its way up the learning curve. And, you know, getting to, to a level of psychological comfort. So, um, I, I do know, and there's a couple of different ways to do that. Um, you know, as I say, my, my plan was to spend the week of February 5th through the 9th here, here in Scotts Bluff and meet with all the commissioners individually, um, reviewing information about the project. And then we're going to have the open house on, uh, the 22nd of February. And, uh, so, uh, however, however, the board, um, feels most comfortable, uh, putting in a structure to work its way up the learning curve, that's all very reasonable. And if the board wants us to engage, um, with a, with a consultant, a third party consultant, we're happy to do that. Um, you know, there's, these projects are pretty, pretty straightforward in terms of the, the engineering and design work. Um, I would say the, the only, the only point I would raise is we, for, for, for all of the menu of the, of the permitting requirement, the regulatory permitting requirements, uh, Dunley Energy is using Two Dot Consulting out of Denver. And in terms of discussions with our, uh, with, with Ethan, our lead consultant there, they, they've offered to do this for the board for free, which is to say, study, uh, a couple of, there, there are a couple of state of Nebraska, county, uh, uh, I would say, I would say sets of guidelines for county regulation of solar, solar and battery sites, sites specifically. And, um, you know, they're, they're willing to basically do an, either a nationwide or state of Nebraska study that highlights industry best practices for regulatory approval of these types of projects. And as I say, so that's, that's one option that's available to the, to the board. Um, and however, to the extent that the board doesn't feel comfortable with that kind of arrangement, if there's, there's some feeling like that presents a conflict of interest, then we're, we're agnostic. We'll, we'll work with anybody to help, help get them up the learning curve. So if the board wants to hire, um, a third party consultant and to try to, to try to help review the regulatory approval process for this, uh, for this specific project, then we'll, we'll work with the consultant. That's not a, you know, that's, that we, we, I can say that we, we haven't heard in, in all of the weeks or months of discussion about this project, we haven't heard one, uh, issue that's been raised that we don't think we can satisfactorily, uh, resolve, right? So, I mean, our, our, our high level, uh, responsibility as developers is do the project the right way, right? Highlight why this project is such a good fit with this location on the grid, grid stability, et cetera. Why we got the, the favorable feasibility, uh, study review from, uh, from WAPA. And, uh, so there's benefits in terms of specifically citing it. I mean, it's a great location from a grid management, uh, perspective. There's other benefits to the county in terms of the tax benefits, et cetera. And then there's a, there's a list of potential challenges, the certainly the security concerns, um, both, uh, in terms of site security, uh, and the, the, the national security. We've, we've, we've reached out and filed an application with the Department of Defense. They have a citing clearinghouse, uh, application process. We've, we've, you know, we've, uh, submitted that application. So that's pending. Um, there, there's a menu, uh, any issues with, with potential, uh, you know, feedback, negative feedback from the neighbors. Um, the road, the road, uh, the care of the roads in terms of both, uh, during and after construction. So there, there's a menu of challenges when you're doing a, this project is going to be over $800 million. It's like 813 and a half or something. And, uh, so there, there's a menu of challenges that have to be resolved satisfactorily. And, uh, we know, um, we know that's the case. We don't have any, any other, uh, ex, we don't have any other, uh, expectations that it would be different. Um, and, and I mentioned it at the, at the last zoning committee meeting. There's 5,000, uh, of these solar and battery projects. I'm not sure if all of them contain batteries, but there's 5,000 operating solar projects around the country. Um, that's as of the DOE as of July of, uh, 2023. So when I hear that, I, what, what that means to me is these sets of challenges have been, have been met and surmounted 5,000 times prior around the country. And I, I, as I say, I haven't heard an issue yet that I don't think we can't, uh, satisfactorily address. Um, you know, a, a, develop a mitigating strategy to and satisfactorily address. So, so, but when it comes to engaging with a consultant that the board would like to hire, we're, we're completely, uh, on board with that and, and completely happy to work with, uh, to work with the consultant and, and answer, provide information to any of the issues that, um, you know, that, that could, that come up.
As long as we keep moving forward on the project.
Yeah, there is, that, that is one issue. Um, that there is, uh, and that, that in the past couple of days, when the issue of the, uh, moratorium hit the agenda, uh, we, we are private equity backed and, um, you know, this, this particular firm is, uh, private equity firm has a, has a portfolio of projects around the country. And, um, you know, to the extent that there's a six month more, that, you know, there was going to be a six month moratorium place that was going to, that was going to affect the project and that could potentially turn into 12 months, uh, you know, the reality is they, they won't, they won't stick around for that. They won't stick in the game for that. They'll, they'll go to the next project, that kind of thing. So, um, we are under some time constraint to continue to show progress on the project, the financial backers. Um, and, uh, to the extent that, you know, we get, we get, you know, sort of bogged down in the regulatory process above and beyond what is, what they see is, I would think, uh, prudent and reasonable. Um, there, I, I would hate to see an op, I would hate to see the county experience an opportunity cost of losing, losing the project. So, uh, so the, so in that regard, there is a time constraint.
Okay. Well, the, the, the moratorium would not affect this, this project or this permitting.
Understood.
Right now. So we're okay with that one? Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Scott?
Oh, I think he answered everything we need to do. And I agree. I think this is a, a good thing we should look into.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you have a card?
Okay. The, uh, the motion before us then would be, we don't have a motion yet, uh, to hire Keith Marvin Consulting. Hopefully we get all of this studying worked in, in that 30 to 45 day period that they're, that they're talking about.
I'd make that motion that we hired.
So we have a motion. Is there a second on the motion?
One second.
Is there any other discussion?
Lisa, are you okay with that dollar amount?
Okay. Is there any other discussion or questions, comments? Hearing none. Record your votes.
Okay, to close?
Close.
Get by gossos?
Okay. All right. We will be, uh, we'll be in contact with you and, and, uh, I would, I would appreciate it if you would be in contact with Bill Maven, our, our Director Building and Zoning Place.
Mr. Marvin?
I, I got a business card from Mr. Eich and so I'm pointing to Commissioners, Bill Maven, our Planning and Zoning Director, and then Mr. Eich, just so you all have each other's contact information. Okay, very good.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thanks a lot.
All right. Yeah. Okay. Moving on to the next item, the, uh, under Old Business, Scotts Bluff Comprehensive Plan. Just to keep it on the, on the agenda.
All right. I guess where are we at with the developing or need to send it out to? Potential vendors.
I guess. So, I mean, it's going to take a little more than, um, if we want to.
Okay.
I would wonder.
Dig around, Charlie.
But isn't that what that guy?
That's what he does. Sounds to me. 3,000.
Well, that's just a supplemental review.
No, I'm talking about, boy, he does comprehensive plans also.
Yes. And his, in my conversation, I told you guys last week that the
Hang on, just a minute, guys.
You guys.
Go ahead.
So I told you guys last week that the comprehensive plan update would be $10,000. I was, I was wrong. This, this Keith Marvin does comprehensive plans for around the $30,000 mark, not the $10,000 mark. So, um, what he did for Red Willow was just like an appendix, kind of like what we have for renewable. He did that for $10,000 for Red Willow. But the, an entire comprehensive plan is probably closer to that there.
Well, I don't think we need a whole one. I think we, we just need the solar and the wind right now, don't we, Charlie?
So we hope Bill in, uh, based on percentage complete. Um, so this could stretch over, you know, two budget years. That's, I, I, I know we've had some comments tonight about, you know, people, you know, not being fans of comprehensive plans, but I do believe, um, we haven't been updated since 97. I would like to have the, a complete redo of the comprehensive or update of the comprehensive plan. And I do believe that a comprehensive plan goes hand in hand with zoning regulations. So I think those things, I think those things happen simultaneously, update the comprehensive plan and update the zoning regs. Phil Kelly's here. He also has done, he has done planning and zoning and, and for communities in the Panhandle. Do you have any, anything to add or?
But Doc, the director of comprehensive is here. Review the zoning application. We are honestly proud that there is public hearing. Trying to go to that public hearing. So it's going to take months to get that updated, John. I agree that best practice would be to hire consultants in that area.
And I, I didn't introduce myself. Did I hear you say you're on the Scotts Bluff Planning Commission? Okay. Have you ever denied anything because it doesn't meet your comprehensive plan? Oh, okay. All right. Okay. Sure.
Please.
Please, just that's okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. My name is Jerry Stricker and I'm a, uh, grew up here and, uh, returned, retired, returned and a resident of Scotts Bluff, Commissioner Mark Harris. And, uh, I am, I am on Scotts Bluff Planning Commission, but I'm not representing anything of Scotts Bluff Planning Commission at this table.
I understand.
So, but you asked me a question. I personally have always looked at any cases that we had and considered the comprehensive plan a part of the, um, book of documents, if you will, uh, with the zoning, uh, regulations. I was mentioning to, uh, Commissioner Knapper in the hallway, you know, when you, if you, uh, don't know where you're going, any road will get you there. And so the comprehensive plan, I review as a roadmap and then you interject these, um, regulatory things, reference them in the plan of how you, uh, use that roadmap. Cause it's very broad and it's subjective. Uh, but to answer your question, I have always done it under, um, findings, uh, experienced it in my career. And so far, I always base my decision votes personally on findings of fact, um, which is what it's generally called with the, uh, comprehensive plan. Way in on that. But, but my fear, um, personally is because I've, we've experienced this, I've experienced it in my, um, professional career. If you don't reference something, um, and to this, the findings of fact, uh, of the plan, even though you, um, I agree that, that some of you may think it's just kind of a loosey-goosey thing. Um, it's pretty subjective. But, but what I'd never want to do is have anybody come and, uh, applicant of any, uh, case and say, well, we reviewed your comprehensive plan, regardless of how antiquated it might be, um, which is a benefit to that person usually because there's so much technology in the meantime. And so, um, my, what I don't want to have happen is, um, denial of something without any finding of fact to tie in it to the, uh, comprehensive plan. You know, that's a $30,000 exercise in futility. If you don't use it, it's a waste of money. But I think it's not a waste of money. It's a roadmap. It's where the community goes. So I'm getting a little bit long-winded. So the, my point is, is I always reference that if my own personal, um, discussions after motions, um, and I've heard this before. So that applicant doesn't have the, they always have the potential, but, um, the basic decision on, uh, does it comply with the findings of fact? So that if somehow it does not, or we find that it does not, and again, subjective, it's not, you know, it's not always easy to do. But if it was not approved based on findings of fact, not in compliance with the plan, I, I don't want to have the applicant have a solid, very solid ground to stand on that says, and this is where I'll look at the attorney, uh, that you have just initiated a takings. You've diminished the value of my property. Because I think we comply with everything and you don't have anything basis for your decision.
Would, would, that's how I Would you agree that a comprehensive plan is not a regulatory document?
It's a, I wouldn't say it's a quasi-regulatory regulatory document. You have to pin me.
I don't pin anybody.
But I'm just saying, that's a figure of speech.
Yeah. Understood. Okay. And thank you for your input. Appreciate it.
Taken interest in this, having a 40-year fire service career. Being the servicing entity for the Colorado School of Mines where probably the likely the last that's available for the solar panels by their
I, I do have a 40-year fire service also. Thank, welcome to the club. I can't believe we stayed that long. Yeah. Thank you very much. Okay, Bill, do you have anything else to add on that? Okay. I think, yeah. See what, yeah. Okay. All right. Um, so we will keep that on the agenda. Just have updates on it. Is that what you ask for, Charlie? Okay. Sounds good. So, thank you. All right. Moving on to the Airport Authority.
That's just a reminder too.
Right. We have a meeting, bulk, bulk, bulk meeting.
Joint.
A joint meeting. A joint meeting tomorrow with the Airport Authority. That's been duly advertised and we're, we're good to go.
So on the second page, that's what I get from NERMA. And so they just go different entities and split our premium to general liability auto. When I displayed on the front, maybe so that, you know, because of airports, they just give me a dollar amount.
84,000, yeah.
Yeah. So what, I'm going to talk to Larry Hammond from NERMA this afternoon. And I just, what do you call it? Take the word pro-rated. Our total amount between these different, we buildings based on their replacement value that's on our pulse. So.
Thank you.
Okay. So our, what they dedicated or almost dedicate of our premium towards the airport for building coverage only was 84,875. But we also split out that Oli building out there. There's a painter that's the Oli. Whatever deal with that was set up with 10 years ago with them, we seem to own their building. So 84,875 plus 9,226 because that portion of our premium, that's the last line on the airport section of the front. All of those reimburse us.
They do reimburse them?
Yes.
That's what it should be.
Yes. Buildings, 94,100.
This is buildings and contents. We're not insuring the contents.
See. The airport works are going to be in.
Yeah. Gotcha.
There's this property in the open. I asked about that too. Apparently that's like street lights and different structures that are on the property that would be or I don't even know what all she was saying on that. That's the term.
All of that then, all of these things that you're talking about.
From the company out called HCA Asset Management in 2017 was in Scotts Bluff County and did an appraisal of all the buildings. And there is a big report, I got it via PBL, pity if anyone wants me to send it to them. Of the appraisal that was done in 2017 to come up with our replacement value, the values we set on all our buildings. And that has been increased every year based on standard index values, probably, probably provided by Mark Felsworth. So, so they've taken the 2017 values and been adjusting them every year. That's what I wanted to just know. So I think that's what was asked. And then Charlie had asked for a budget and I've asked twice now, said to you for what the other revenue information is. I can't tell you anything because I haven't gotten it.
Available tomorrow. That should be in their audit. I mean, what they should, they should be able to pull that out in five. Would you, yeah, I mean, that should be something.
What's on their audit, 2022, what? It's just, I don't
We'll have very
I don't have detail. I don't have detail. I can see it 390,142. But it's how much is Hertz? How much is Valley Airways?
Airport Authority.
I've given them different documents. They don't
Okay.
But I wanted to see that along with our own buildings. Basically value prorated in.
Let me ask Kelly something, uh, and I, I know that you're on top of everything. Will there be a agenda with just this item on? Or is it going to be, there is an agenda with that on it. Okay.
Oh, well, we just have a basic
Well, I, I don't want to veer from the, what the agenda item is. That's what I'm saying.
Action regarding proposed by Scotts Bluff campaign regarding agreement. Certain insurance and discussion of regulations.
Okay. So that's all, that's all in one. Okay. Right. Just want to make sure that was covered. So we're doing it. Okay. Thank you.
You saw my email to them Friday. I gave possible topics.
10:30 tomorrow. Did you say that part?
Is that going to be in conjunction with their meeting or?
Their meeting at 9:30. I'll be at that. They're usually done in an hour.
Okay. So 10:30 then we'll, we'll Gotcha. Okay. Very good. Okay. All right. Very good. Uh, any other thing on the Airport Authority stuff before we move on? Any questions?
So do you guys want me leaving both of those items under Old Business?
Um, yes, let's do
Thank you.
Yes, just so we can discuss them.
That's a good idea.
All right. Next, uh, next item is public comments. The Board of Commissioners, this time will receive public comments on items discussed at this meeting or suggestions for items of discussion at a future board meeting, understanding that there will be no action taken on any of the comments. So is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak? Yes, sir. Blair, go ahead. State your name and
Larry Bear.
There you go.
How do you spell the last name?
B A R E.
Thank you.
Um, and I, I'm just going to hold you up here a second. You guys are public servants. You work for the public, so you shouldn't have a conscience as far as I think this would be good for me or what. How do you feel this would benefit Scotts Bluff County? That's my first question.
I would, I would what benefit the, oh, the solar. Okay. I just want to
Down, will they be hiring construction people from this area to build this project? Will they be buying solar panels in Nebraska? I think these are questions that need answered, but um, I don't see the benefit of this in any way, shape or form to anyone other than landowners, at least than the landlord. And I don't regret him for that, but I feel sorry for his neighbors. If, if he got a solar farm right next to this guy's cows and his farming the ground up here, then it devalues his property unless it's setback. That's mainly
Well, and, and that's part of what our decision-making is made up with, Larry, is does it meet the zoning requirements? Uh, or does it, does it adversely affect the, the neighbors? And we, and we've used this excuse before. We got a, we got a housing development. Somebody wants to put in Big Farm in that area. Okay. That would be something that we would certainly be, be looking at, you know, is that going to adversely affect those property values or whatever the case might be. And, and those are the two biggest things that we as a board have to take into consideration when, when approving or, or disapproving. As far as what the company is, where they buy their stuff, it, it really above our, yeah.
For your constituents in Scotts Bluff County.
And, and I, and I think we do for, for most of it. And we're, we're asking a lot of questions about this. Those questions that we have the authority to ask, I guess, weren't anything else. If it were a, a different type of business company or whatever, would we be asking the same questions? Probably. Probably. And it would be, it would be considered in that comprehensive plan and their list of concerns that we have, whether it be runoff or road repair, or whatever it is that we're, that we're concerned about. So we are, we are looking out for the constituents.
It's going to turn that into 30, 40 years ago, they opened some of that up there and then they didn't have water, they did some foodful sand and actually closer to Banner County. I mean, that's pretty fragile. And then of course, who's going to feed it?
Good. Thank you, Larry.
That's what we need to answer.
Is there anybody else? Yes, sir.
Evening. I'm still Jerry Stricker.
Still. Are you junior? You're not related to the other Jerry Stricker?
We do get a lot of mail
Yes, just keep it.
Prescription mixups. And just, I'd like to, uh, just take a minute to, uh, thank you, Charlie, for bringing up the, um, notion of six-month moratorium and discussion on, uh, updating the comprehensive plan. What I can say, uh, as a planning commissioner in Scotts Bluff is that, uh, where they're letting out, if it hasn't already been a proposal for updating the comprehensive plan. And that one was on from 2016, the current. So it's important to keep those up. But I, and I, and I, I'm appreciative that you, um, made it. It, although I have no, uh, dog in the fight with this development of this, this site. I appreciate that you didn't, uh, bait and switch the rules in the middle of the game with applicant, make it going forward because put yourself in the business regardless of what, what people think the value is. If you operate that way, you're probably not going to get very much business here if you do that kind of thing. And so I appreciate that you, um, did it in a thoughtful discussion.
Yeah.
Thank you, Derek.
Anybody else? Anyone? Dealer? Okay, if not, we'll move on to, uh, board and staff reports. Uh, we'll start with the board. Russ, do you have anything?
The, uh, off my report last time, but the, uh, Box Colbert's been forward and it was just last week, just before the snow and it's covered and being heated. Well, I think since we get speeds where they'll strip and pour the cath on that.
Where, where is it?
Uh, the one at Lyman on County Road Five, the Box Colbert.
County Road Five? Thank you.
Five, Box Colbert. Anyway, that's coming around. It's coming along good, so it won't be long. We'll have that road open again.
Okay, very good. Mike?
Well, last week I had my first meeting with the Housing Authority. Uh, I knew everybody there, so very courteous bunch and it sounds like they're doing a much needed service in the whole panel, actually. Uh, I also, today I visited with dispatchers downstairs and then I attended the nine-one-one board meeting, uh, very short agenda. Talk about the rave. Programs for nine-one-one dispatchers, the base rate allows individuals to, uh, put in their medical needs if they want to or their med needs. Uh, if there's any issues with, uh, domestic abuse, that could be put into their files. That way, when a call comes in, uh, the dispatcher can click on that individual's file and find out all the pertinent data they need, which I think is a great deal because uh, it'll give first responders a lot more information to respond to an emergency.
Has, has the program been put in where the dispatchers are now able to give medical advice?
They're going through the EMD training right now.
But they're not finished.
And they have two individuals yet to complete that. Uh, so, uh, once that's done, then they'll be able to respond to medical needs a little more efficiently.
Well, before they couldn't do it at all. That was, that was the sad part.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I had, uh, one meeting canceled on my Thursday stuff, but, uh, it was a busy, a busy Thursday. Uh, Region One is still debating the, uh, work schedule. Whether or not they need to show up for work or not. Think there's going to be much of a debate with it, but listening to the, kind of the pulse of the board. Uh, and along with that, we discussed the need for the building. Yeah. They, uh, this region is the only one that actually owns their building. Everybody else leases space. So their, their costs are astronomical when it comes to that, to that building. Um, so that's, it, it wasn't talked about very long, but I'm doing some research into it with some other stuff that's going on, so there, there's a possibility that, uh, they may be looking at maybe something different. The, the, the question kept coming up was how many spaces do we need? Have you got people working from home? Why do they need to be here? Why do we need to heat and cool the whole building? Or why do you need to heat and cool a whole building, I should say? Uh, so it was a pretty lengthy discussion. It got pretty heated, actually. And there, there are two or three commissioners are pretty stuck on all this. So that was, uh, that was an interesting meeting. Uh, and, uh, AG meeting, we always have good AG meetings. Uh, lots of stuff there. One of their biggest things is, is, uh, not getting the cooperation that they think they need to get on. They're working with ten homeless, ten homeless groups or families right now and they're looking for, for help and they're just not getting the response that they need. So I'm going to, I said on one other board on Caplin, that is supposed to help with that sort of thing, so. Got some calls into that. So some good, good productive meetings. It was a long day.
I don't know. Go ahead. The American Legion was posting about getting help for the, the homeless.
There, I think there's, but I'm just talking about the ones that I know about.
Right.
That, that I, that I do know that and receive funding to do that.
Yeah.
I, I had a a homeless person situation a week ago and ultimately referred them to Caplin, but I'm just wondering where's the best place to be referring?
It used to be Caplin, but from what I'm understanding there, I don't know whether they're out of fun. I, I'm not sure what I'm, I'm looking into it. Trying to figure out where the, where the best place to go with it. Cause those numbers seem to be increasing.
And the American Legion is working through the AGing Office on this latest program. So I know when people donate funds to the Legion, uh, the check is made out to the AGing Office of West.
That's correct. I spoke to Charlie the other day regarding our relief and aid fund that we've got so many people coming in and getting their one or two night stay. They, and Deb puts them up into, gosh, uh, Candlelight Inn over there by the Old Whiskey Creek for like sixty-nine dollars a night, but we'll be coming to you someday probably to see about in- increasing that budget because it's, the need has been really substantial.
But, but, you know, and the other, the other thing is, and I, I don't want to name names or anybody else, but there are agencies out there. There's supposed to help the fact that that's, that's what we're helping and that's what we're doing and that.
Is there?
So that's what I'm looking into now. I've got two or three phone calls out and I'm not getting any answers yet. We'll see.
Be good to know.
Working on, yeah, I'm, I'm, we're working on it. Cause the, uh, the numbers keep increasing. That's, that's.
That's what I'm hearing. Caplin is sending, saying, go talk to the county. So when does, when does Caplin pick up?
Send them to the AGing Office.
When do they?
You know, AGing Office has limited funds to do that also. Didn't Sheriff's House do the? They did, but there was a, there has to be, and, and Region One does it also, but there needs to be a, uh, well, I need to be careful I say this. I want to be politically correct. There needs to be a condition. There needs to be a, uh, an association or the, they, they have had to be in with, with Region One at one time or Sheriff's House or just not anybody off the street. But there has to be some other conditions that they need to deal with. Cause I, I was under the same thing. I thought they might, I used to send a, the Sheriff's House forward too.
I used to have an old hippie that, okay, just blanking and he, it's Sheriff's House.
Yeah.
Wanted to work for it, but he finally got enough money. He went and rented him a place to body him back up.
But it's, it's becoming more and more of a problem. Really is. And I'm, I'm like you, Lisa. I think there, a lot of them are getting referred to us thinking that we have unlimited funds for that sort of thing and we don't. Nobody absolutely don't. So anyway, I'll keep working on it.
So, um, I've been gone, uh, out of town for about six days now. And, uh, the, a couple of the meetings that I was, um, scheduled to go to, I was going to be out of town, but they got canceled anyway because of some weather and, um, so the last week I have not, um, attended any of my regular commissioner meetings.
You're going to get in trouble.
Yeah.
I did.
But I've got some coming up, so.
Yeah. Okay, very good. Charlie?
Um, so tomorrow I'll have to link in, um, as part of the NACO legislative meeting. Um, we'll be looking at any and all bills that have been introduced in the legislature that affect county government. Um, taking positions on them, identifying, um, allies in the legislature that, that will help us, um, amend any bills or, or support bills that, that could benefit us and, uh, make sure that we're not treated unfairly or, or make sure there's no unfunded mandates coming towards us. Um, so if you've heard of any bills that you're concerned of, um, please let me know. Uh, some of the most interesting ones I believe are the, the bill to um, have the state take over the county jail. I like that. That's an interesting one. Um, and then, uh, county attorneys would also do that. A different bill, but county, the other, another bill is for county attorneys to become employees of the state and work underneath the Attorney General, which is intriguing at best. My concern there is, I think generally I like the Attorney General today. I don't know if I'll like the Attorney General in four years. So, um, you know, I think, you know, local control, local elections matter. If I, in my first, that first blush, I'm thinking that's probably something we want to keep. Um, our voters will want to decide on, on this county attorney who, who's who's sitting in that office. Um, looks like the inheritance tax is on the chopping block again, this time with a five-year phase out. Um, that's going to be a tough one. Um.
County assessor one, that was interesting when I read it.
You know, I don't recall that.
That where, where the county assessor would be appointed by the, by the Board of Commissioners rather than elected.
Yeah, I just heard about that today. I like that.
It's on that, it's on that sheet that NACO sent out, an email the other day.
I haven't heard.
Yeah.
I'm sure it'll come up on Thursday.
And then.
Yeah, I did write the number. I, I printed it off. I was going to bring it tonight.
It's canceled. The detention center, or maybe he canceled. He just.
He's.
Yeah. Yeah. Put this line right here.
Next week or the week after?
Well, the next, the next meeting.
If we're meeting, you're meeting the twenty ninth. Are you?
Twenty weeks, that's fourteen days.
Yeah, we'll still be within our statutory. Yeah.
Workshop. Slash jail tour. That's, you need to have that. We need to do that workshop. We might as well meet for a workshop and then go over to the jail.
That's what I have. Thank you.
And, um, on that workshop, I think, you know, if we could come up with a list of conditions that we think we may need to have out there, um, at the, at the solar site, I think that's, you know, we could start a working list of conditions to add to the permit. Um, one of my main concerns is, is the erosion that was brought up earlier, um, by, by Larry Bear. Um, I think that's one of the biggest concerns for me is, is, you know, if those solar panels heat up, that ground gets sterilized, that sand starts to blow. Um, it'll blow until it, you know, blow till it's high. So you got neighbors over there that are probably going to be affected by any kind of type of erosion that will take place. So when, I want something in there. I don't know, maybe some sort of matting, some sort of irrigation, some sort of something to help that stay down. But anyway. Uh, in that workshop, I think we should talk about.
You'll need to email me to get it on the agenda, pretty please.
Or, or anybody else that wants to.
Yeah.
Come before us.
So that's January twenty-ninth at our normal time.
I don't know that.
Yes.
Regular time?
Four thirty.
Four thirty?
And it's, we're calling it our workshop and then jail tour.
We want to finish with the, with the other meeting. Okay, Charlie, you got anything else?
Oh.
Yeah, is it okay? Uh, Lisa, start with you.
No. Oh, I guess we do have an active shooter, um, training session tomorrow afternoon. We had one last week and then Mike came from one to three. It's, um, led by Sergeant Crystal. Very good information.
Yeah.
It's really good because they teach you when to use the panic button and when not to. That's very, very important.
Yeah.
If I'm a little bit scared.
And de-escalation, definitely. Yeah.
That's a deep. Okay, I was going to call on you next. Lisa, are you done? I'm sorry.
I think so.
As you ordered. Well. To advertise the name, we have to advertise, um, Cytus of some property. We, we go, we just advertise illegal. We'll still have to advertise legal. It's going to make our advertising bill go way up.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Um, but we do have to advertise the private owners names.
Don't you get reimbursed for the advertising back on you?
Five dollars, uh, parcel. It's a bit for.
Anyone have a way to increase that? Is that something that, is that statute? If any of our names are on it, make sure it let us know.
I got mine off today.
Okay. Good.
Yeah. The link of those words, so.
Kelly?
Okay, so, um, reminders, there is a county board workshop. Says June twelfth through fourteen.
It's a board chairman workshop.
Now it doesn't zoom out. There's a county budget workshop also June twelfth, so I'm guessing that didn't it start the workshop and then went into the, um, the county board workshop last year?
The last, well, I don't know what last year. At the last, I went the one two years ago and it was, uh, just strictly county, county chairman.
Okay, and I apologize. Wouldn't, the county board chair workshop is February fifteenth or sixteenth in.
I knew, I thought it was coming up.
So I need to know if either one of you want to go to that or both, so I can get you registered, I'm guessing.
February sixteenth, the what?
February sixteenth in Kearney is the county board chair. I told you the wrong date. Before the meeting. I need to remind every elected official to file their C one with Nebraska Accountability and Disclosure Commission. Any incumbents filing deadline to run for office is February fifteenth. Any non-incumbents to run for office is March first. And that's what I got.
Have you had any filings yet?
For, yes. Not, not for a county office, but I've had people running, filing for us. We started taking those on, or we could start taking them on.
Any interesting ones?
No. Really?
Okay. Are you, you're going to give us a copy of that disclosure?
I can. Who else needs it?
You can do it on.
Do it. Well, they're encouraging people to do it online.
Some can, some can't.
I understand that. Do you just want this or do, who else needs one? So I've emailed it to you. You don't have a printer.
Did you email? You, you did email it?
I emailed the instructions, I think, with a link to print it.
Okay, I think that's how I did it. And that, what's the deadline on that one, Kelly?
He'll say to you about four.
Well, here's the thing. Anybody that's up for election, if you have not filed this, you do not get your name on the ballot. If, but we have to do this annually also. New fi- new filers will have to do this. Non-incumbents will have to do this, but we have to do it as elected officials annually.
Okay, very good. Anything else, Kelly?
I don't have anything else.
Charlie, I think you've covered everything on legislation. Anybody else have anything that we need to know about? Not? We're done.
Oops. Yeah. Yeah. So now I got it. You're Steve's cousin.
Steve's.
Steve.